Good evening, it being seven o'clock, I'll call the July tenth meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order, if you'd please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I just want to make an announcement that this meeting is being broadcast live by Channel Telemedia and taped for later rebroadcast. If anybody else is here taping either audio or video, please let me know at this time. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with public service announcements this evening. I have a couple that I want to make. First of all, on Saturday, July twenty-second, there'll be the Second Annual Movie Night at Chelmsford's Varney Playground in North Chelmsford. Beginning at six-thirty, come by for family fun, there'll be games, music, and fun, free popcorn and surprises, and you're asked to wear your favorite team jersey. And at eight-thirty PM will be the music, the movie, which is The Sandlot, a family classic movie, one that I have not seen. It's free for all Chelmsford family and friends, so come on by, that's Saturday, July twenty-second, starts at six-thirty, and the movie starts at eight-thirty. Also want to announce that on July twenty-seventh at six PM, we will have the official grand opening of the Oak Hill Reservation. The Chelmsford Conservation Commission and the Oak Hill Reservation Committee will tell you a little bit about the history of Oak Hill, what it offers to the community, and a little bit about the new bridge that's been installed and the trails. If you have any questions about this Oak Hill Reservation, you can get in touch with Katie Messer at kmesser@townofchelmsford.us. Again, at six PM on July twenty-seventh, and there will be refreshments at that event. Thank you. Okay, we're now at the open session part of the meeting. Do we have anybody that would like to address the board at this time about any topics? Don't see anybody getting up, so we will move on to committee vacancies. Laura, it's your turn to talk.
Okay, there are vacancies on the following committees: the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Board of Registars, the CCH, Chelmsford Community Arts Advisory Committee, the Center of Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Civic Committee, the Commission on Disabilities, the Community Action Program Committee, the Cultural Council, the Dog Bark Advisory Committee, the Energy Conservation Committee, the Historic District Commission Alternate Member, sorry, Holiday Decorating Committee, the IT Capital Advisory Committee, the Parade Committee, the Permanent Building Committee, the Personnel Board, the Public Celebrations Committee, the Recycling Committee, the Sign Advisory Committee, the Tree Committee, and the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee. The information about these vacancies is available on the town website, and applications can be submitted to the town manager's office.
And just for informational purposes, the reason we have so many vacancies now is because there's a lot of appointments that expired at the end of June, some people chose not to be reappointed, so that's why we have a rather lengthy list now, and we want to really shrink that list down to very few, if any. Okay, we'll next go to public hearings. The first one is for a Class Two Auto Dealer's License for Dr. Auto. Do we have anybody here from Dr. Auto?
Hi, my name is Joe Nguyen from Dr. Auto. We just opened up shop about a month ago, but we've been in the automotive, me and my brother, we opened up the shop about a month ago, and we've been in the automotive industry for about fifteen years, so we're hoping to get a license to buy and sell used cars.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nguyen? Okay, I have a question. On your application, it notes that you expect to have twenty-five for sale or twenty-five on the lot, twenty-five total between...
Twenty-five for sale, but I think we're mostly gonna do that on the side.
Okay.
We're mainly a repair shop.
Uh-huh, right.
So, I want to be able to have probably like a few cars on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, but max, maximum to twenty-five.
Max for sale of twenty-five?
Right.
Okay, alright.
And how many spaces were...
There's fifty spaces.
Oh, okay.
There's plenty of space. Okay, this being a public hearing, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or against this application for a license? Okay, we have none. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about closing the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Seven, are you working on your motion?
I am working on a motion, I just was trying to figure where it was written. Alright, I would like to make a motion to approve the application for Class Two Auto Dealer's License for Dr. Auto to be exercised on the premises at 170 Middlesex Street, Chelmsford, Mass.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
Okay, next up is an all alcohol restaurant license for Tapatio Restaurant. Do we have anybody here?
Hi, my name is Tony Moreira, and I am representing El Tapatio Two DBA Heradura Vieja Restaurant at Seven Summer Street.
Okay, wanna tell us a little bit about it, or...
Well, we want to open a restaurant here in town, the downtown area, Seven Summer Street seems to be a right place, be a nice mix of restaurants in this area. We're looking forward to the approval of the alcohol. The restaurant, we asking for about a hundred and, I believe, a hundred and twenty-five people at this, at units two and three, I believe, Summer Street.
Okay, anybody have any questions about this application?
Do you have prior experience operating a restaurant that...
Yeah, the owners, I'm the coordinator, project coordinator for this project. The owners do own another restaurant in Merrimack, New Hampshire, El Tapatio. They also own, they also part owners in two other restaurants, I believe, in Maryland. So they have quite a bit of experience in the Mexican restaurant business.
And the alcohol is served at all of those establishments?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? One thing I noticed, on your application, it does say a hundred and twenty-five seats, however, on your lease, it says eighty.
Yeah, we thought eighty was a little bit too low, too small, we asking for a hundred and twenty-five. We believe that a hundred and twenty-five is proper for the, for the space, the way it's gonna be laid out, but we also wait to see what the other departments have to say about it, the building department, and fire, border health, so.
Now, has, has...
If that has to change a little bit, we have to accept what the local codes are and what, a number that everybody's comfortable with, but that's the number that we would like.
Okay, Paul, does the ADA coordinator go check out the seating?
Yes, yeah, to make sure there's ample room, yep.
Okay, 'cause it does seem like it might be kinda tight with a hundred and twenty-five.
And also fire department as well, for codes.
Right.
Right, we usually get their approval prior to...
Yeah, which, it looks like they've signed off.
But did they sign off on the eighty number, or they signed off at the one-twenty-five?
The one-twenty-five is the application.
Yeah, they signed off on the application.
Okay.
Yeah. But they did, they did, kinda brought it up to us, that that number would be looked at.
And again, very similar to what we have when they opened the restaurant at the old Skip's location, remember, they were, they were, you sign up on the plan, and then when they did the pre-inspections, they had to make some accommodations, you know, for that, for that reason, so that's what will happen here.
Right, exactly, okay.
If there are...
We understand, we understand the safety concerns and exits, ends and outs and all of that for the people, the number of people, and we understand that sometimes the number could be at one-twenty-five, it could actually be one-thirty, or, you know, a little bit less, but we hope to do good business here and attract all the locals.
Okay, any other questions, the applicant? Okay, this being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Harrington?
I just have a couple of questions, Chairman, for the applicant. You're saying Seven Summer Street, and you have other locations, correct? My question is, when I'm about across the street, at your other locations, what have commitment have they've done in the communities that they serve? Do they get involved, or they just run the business and not get involved in any of the activities a community would have? For example, holiday decorating, tree lighting, and a number of things that the town of Chelmsford does. I heard what you said, that you looked at this location, it's a great place to do business, but do you plan to give back to this community? Or do you just plan to run a business and not give back? And I'll be coming before this board a number of times, asking that question for applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing with this individual, but it's a question that I feel comfortable now asking, so that's my question. What have you done in your other locations?
Thank you.
I, I myself owned two restaurants before. I'm a little old now, and a little bit too old to operate restaurants, but I know that when restaurants participate in local activities, supporting events locally, it's just good practice, good business, and I don't have any doubt that the, these owners will participate and help activities around town.
Okay, I'm sure that there'll be, you know, there'll be people reaching out to them on a regular basis to help.
It's just good common sense, good practice. I know that the restaurant they have in Merrimack, they, they support different, whether it's softball teams, and whether it's a police department or fire department, they, they support all the activities and the local, all the local authorities.
Okay. So is there anybody else that wants to speak for or against? Okay, we don't have anybody else? It is the policy of this board for an alcohol license to continue the hearing till our next meeting, 'cause for a lot of people in the community, this is the first time they're hearing about anything like this, so we continue it for, till our next meeting, and then hear if we have any other additional comments.
We understand. We sent out the public notices to all the buttons, I think, I believe we sent out something like thirty-nine or something. We have received about fifty-some percent of that, twenty-three out of the thirty-nine so far.
You can give those to the town manager.
Okay.
And, and so we will continue this public hearing until our next meeting, which is July thirty-first.
Right.
So you can come back then and see if there's any additional comments, and we'll take a vote at that point.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting on July thirty-first?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is a Verizon poll petition for Tracy Road.
Hey, good evening, Maynard Wallace, representing Verizon on this petition. Petition's pretty straightforward, it's for a new service poll that National Grid has requested, the Verizon Places. They want, they're in the process of upgrading some of the facilities in the area, and they need this poll to facilitate that upgrade. There are currently polls on both sides of, you know, this is a crossover poll, what they call a stub poll, to help them service the building. That's pretty much what it, what it is.
Okay, you have any questions for the applicant?
Let's give additional service down there, where we're trying to develop it down there, well, let's bring it.
Right, like companies looking to upgrade their facilities, and so when they upgrade, they usually run the bigger stuff down there, and so.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this, this poll on Tracy Road? Okay, and we did receive a memo from DPW recommending approval of this petition, just wanted to note that. Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
This is not something that we would allow the neighbors to get...
They would've gotten notification.
They would, okay. So, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the poll placement request.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And do we have a motion to approve, or no?
I will make a motion to approve the poll placement on Tracy Road per the submitted petition.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second for a poll, for the poll petition on Tracy Road, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, next we have another poll petition from National Grid, we have... Okay, somebody to talk about that poll?
Good evening, Council. Sam Eng, North Andover, National Grid Design. National Grid would like to install two polls on Chelmsford Street, poll sixty-six dash twenty-five and sixty-six dash twenty-five-one, for a service upgrade at thirty-nine Chelmsford Street. Those ones CVS, and it's now a Medical Express.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? Is that a yes?
I do not have any questions, sorry.
Yes. Okay, and we did receive from DPW on this one, indication that the placement for one of the polls conflicts with... Conflicts with, that's not it?
We're gonna see if the audience, see if you can explain.
He's right there, yeah. Mr. Yonley, if you want to come, I, I know I read something about a conflict on this one.
Yeah, actually, both of them. The one on the even-numbered side of the street, in front of the, the left side of the laundromat with the subway and all that stuff, conflicts with the sewer service, based on where it's marked in the field. And then the one on the other side of the street, the, with the old CVS, the Med Express now, I just ask that that get moved behind the landscape timbers, 'cause we're not gonna be able to do snow removal, we won't have the width to snow blow that sidewalk with our machines, so that has to be, that minimum on the backside of the sidewalk, better yet in the, behind the landscape timbers, 'cause I can't, our machine won't fit between that pole and the landscape timber wall there.
Okay, now, now, based on these comments, should we, should we request another drawing for this, Paul, or can we just do it...
That's within their right-of-way variance, right, Steve?
Yeah.
It is? Okay.
It's all within the public right-of-way, so I mean...
Okay, so we can just make it contingent on these two conditions?
Correct, that's fine.
You need them both, you need them both, Rob?
The one on the laundromat side of the street's gotta go left or right, whatever direction, and the, the one on the old CVS, the Med Express, has to, can go straight back, but I don't know if that'll shift a little bit, 'cause you want to come straight across the street, that's up to these guys.
Maybe we can shift it to make it align, but away from the sewer, but that's understandable.
I mean, as far as coming back further from the sidewalk.
There's room within the right-of-way, they can go back, you know, behind, like I say, behind that landscape timber.
Okay, thank you. Again, this being a public hearing, does anybody else in the audience have any comments for or against this application? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And make a motion to approve the petition for, placement of two polls on Chelmsford Street, contingent on the two requests submitted by the DPW on July fifth.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we are gonna talk about stormwater. Paul, I'll let you talk about it.
Yeah, thank you, and I wanted to take a few moments to discuss this, and I just want to explain the absence of Gary Perscetti, our Public Works Director, who oversees that program. He's not able to be here due to a death in his immediate family. But Steve Yonley is here to answer any questions that the board may have. Since our last meeting, you know, which was three weeks ago, the EPA came out with its notice, two days prior to the start of the implementation of the program, on the twenty-eighth of June, that they will postpone the implementation of the, the new regulations on stormwater by one year. And that would, that mean basically put it off to the effective date of July one, two thousand and eighteen, and basically they stated in that, in that directive that it would provide, one, it would, it would align the appeals that have been filed in New Hampshire with those in Massachusetts, that will now have a common implementation date, and therefore they're hoping that the courts would, would handle those cases concurrently. And then, secondly, they explained that they're also going to pursue alternative dispute resolution, which is basically going to an arbitration, see if they can resolve this matter. As we explained when the board had the special meeting regarding the bond issuance, of which there was a million dollars contained in the bond issuance for the equipment, in terms of vehicles, for the stormwater division as well, and the bulk of it actually was for the rehab of the, and the creation of space within the building for the stormwater division, we, we could not unbundle that. I mean, that, that sale had been advertised, bids in and so forth, and we couldn't unbundle the million dollars from the, the almost ten million dollar bond issuance. So here we are now, on, on July tenth, we, we have basically suspended any activities regarding stormwater, so it's as if nothing has taken place. At this point, I think the future of what's going to happen is a bit cloudy. Clearly, you know, we know nothing's going to happen for a year, and also, I think you're now starting to see, if you start looking at what's happening now with the new EPA administrator and the, the administration in Washington, and also the whole issues of Clean Water Act, which is what the appeal was based upon, that, that I think there's really some questions in terms of where this is all going, in terms of its final outcome, and clearly, you know, that may take court rulings and other actions in terms of what's going on with the clean water issues nationwide. Our initial thought, when, when we announced you at your meeting in June, that, that things were gonna be suspended, was sort of not to expend any money, as we discussed here at our last meeting, on any, anything that would be part of the new regulations, because that would bring a concern, in terms of, we didn't want to be quote-unquote wasting money, or spending money on a, on certainly a three-hundred thousand dollar stormwater plan, as we spoke about, that we now not know what those final regulations would, could be. I think the, to, the most straightforward method at this point in time, and why we brought it this evening, realizing there wasn't a full board, is that because sewer bills for the first six months of the fiscal year are gonna be processed later this week. And I think, given the uncertainty of the situation, given the sentiment that's out there, that I think the best course of action at this point in time is to do no action, meaning that we, in essence, take no action regarding the new stormwater program until there's clarity on this. So now that leaves the question, well, what do you do with the million dollars that's been borrowed, and also, what do you do with the equipment that's, that was pre-ordered, much like we order cruisers and stuff in advance, ahead of time? It's my understanding that the vehicles that were purchased, at this point, you know, were two, two white pickup vehicles, therefore, if we cancel those vehicles, there ought not to be a hardship in terms of the deal of being able to sell those vehicles otherwise, and the same thing with the dump trucks, there, you know, although those aren't as, those inventory doesn't move as fast, we don't, you know, there, there was no lettering, there was no customization for the vehicles, and, you know, so at this point, I think that our, our action is to take no action, and then that remains the question of the million dollars in borrowing. As you've heard over the years, either town meeting, or John Suze's here and explanations, if the town borrows money and doesn't expend it, you know, whether it's a, well, for example, we talked about the school project, for example, you know, we authorize a number, which we think were gonna come a million dollars underneath, and therefore, if the town had borrowed the full amount, which we didn't for the school project, to make that clear, we only, we borrowed what we believe we're going to expend, but if the town had borrowed the full authorization and didn't expend it, as was often seen in town meeting, that, that unused proceeds can be applied to a borrowing of equivalent or greater period. And so I propose that that's what the town do in this instance, that we initiate no stormwater activities, other than, you know, basically, we'll do our catch space and cleaning, we'll do street sweeping, everything as we've done in the highway, as we've done this past fiscal year, and we'll work within the budget that was appropriated. But then, that we take the million dollars that's been borrowed, and that we look to fall town meeting, or worst case, spring two thousand and eighteen town meeting, to apply that debt service to that project. What comes to mind, in terms of, you know, is this really, is there something out there? What comes to mind is a Chelmsford Forum. As the boards are aware, we, the town of Chelmsford has to exercise its option to purchase the forum by June of two thousand and eighteen, and under that special legislation that was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, the community gets to purchase the forum for the appraised value of the forum building, unless the capital improvements the town has made during the third, during the period from ninety-eight to two thousand and eighteen, the twenty-year period. We, as the board knows, we went to town meeting, we had an appropriation, we had an appraisal done. Where that stands right now with the state officials is, in terms of capital asset management and so forth, is they've accepted our appraisal, and they are signing off on the capital improvement documentation that Darlene and Gary and Steve and, and John Suze, everyone pulled all the checks and receipts and everything together, and got us a credit. And so it appears at this point in time that the town may, maybe, may ask, and you'll see on my draft lists of warrant articles next meeting, to acquire the forum at the net cost at, at your meeting, at town meeting in October. That number right now appears to be about one point two million dollars. So there's an example of what could be applied, so given that we had already borrowed a million that we're not gonna utilize, and clearly we would finance the forum acquisition over a ten-year period, we could then apply that debt to, to, to that acquisition, and then that would, that would utilize that money that's been borrowed, and then if you really wanted to totally undo it, you could then rescind the appropriation for the stormwater borrowing, and then redo it at whatever time in the future, because if you don't do it, then you have an authorized but an issued debt on your books that's still out there. As you know, we've had, occasionally had to come back and clean that stuff up, and so I think we'd rather just clean it up, up front. So that's, that's what I'm proposing at this point in time, would be, basically, recognize that where we are today on July tenth, the EPA is postponing the implementation by one year till July of two thousand and eighteen, and I think clearly there's some uncertainty regarding where this is going, although I do expect that, that given that the current regulations are a dozen or so years old, that there will be something at some point in the future, but that's unclear at this point, whether that would be in the next twelve months or period thereafter. And then, again, given that we borrowed that one million dollars, would be to apply that to a future bond issuance at either fall or spring town meeting. So that's, that's, unless the board has any questions, Steve or I can, can answer those for you, but I think the, the most conservative approach would be that at this point in time.
That would be, have to be approved at the town meeting.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, anything would have to be approved at the town meeting, I mean, you know, but, but I mean, the key thing is, is we will not expend any monies, nor will we put any surcharge on, regarding the sewer, stormwater enterprise fund, on the sewer bills that go out, you know, over the next several months.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll just ask you a couple. I just want to, I don't mean to be redundant with you, Paul, but I just want to be crystal clear to the public. There's no charge on the bills, the water bills, right? There's no fees that will show up. And the stormwater, as far as an enterprise fund, is not going to be set up.
Right. That we know initiative of action, action under at all.
Any equipment, there won't be any equipment purchased. And there's not going to be anybody hired or anything like that. It's all, it's as if it never passed. And then you talked about the budget, the lack upon the budget. The DPW budget will stay the same as it was. There will be no enterprise fund budget, nothing there.
Right.
And on your second piece, using the money for the forum, are there any other projects that you could think of that the town would use that money for?
Nothing immediately comes to mind. I mean, I think there'll be something going to town meeting for Roberts Field, for the playground equipment, but it's not clear at this point that that would be a five- or 10-year borrowing purchase. But there's one there that, I think it's $400,000 or something, that's the number they have in their budget right now. So you can see how those numbers, you know, we're only, we're talking a million dollars. And just to give a sense on what impact that has, the principal and interest payment in the upcoming year on that million-dollar borrowing is $166,053. Now, remember, you're paying it over a 10-year period, so you've, you know, and remember, a town doesn't borrow a level payment, it borrows a level principal. So what happens is that 166 will decline over the 10-year period. But that is the initial, which is the peak year, is the 166, 53. So the good thing is, is we did get a good interest rate, as John explained at the last meeting. And like I said, there would be reasonable considerations in which the town meeting could decide, you know, which to allocate that million dollar in borrowing. If nothing were to happen, let's say, okay, there's nothing that happens over the year, well, it would just stay there and go into the second year. We'd have to take that, we'd have to go to town meeting in the spring and pay that principal and interest, because we don't have that built into the general operating budget. But as the boards are familiar, I mean, you oftentimes don't finance the entire cost or expend the full money on a project in the first year of implementation. I mean, you don't want to get into arbitrage issues, but the bottom line is, you know, it's not unheard of, whether we're doing a fire station or other issues, that you don't expend the full amount in the first year of borrowing.
I think it's good that you looked at all the other options that are available, and it's, rates are going up, so at least we got the money locked in.
Yeah. It was a difficult decision, because, yeah, I don't want to give the impression that there aren't drainage projects that are worthy of consideration out there, or many of the other initiatives such as GIS mapping, or maintenance or other issues that could take place with the funds that would not, you know, that would be sound investments by the community. But I think, you know, I remember discussing this with George over the period. George says, you know what, Paul, there are a lot of sound investments that could be made in this community, and let's, at this point, hold on to this and just demonstrate to the community, you know, those town meeting members, as well as the community at large, you know, that we're very mindful of the climate that we're in right now. And I think we've seen that cautiousness at the state level, when they just did the state budget. You know, there's this, you know, and we saw that too, and you saw, and not to get derailed a little bit, but you saw that softness in our meals tax numbers, which, you know, I mean, and hotel tax. I mean, that's the lowest rooms excise tax we've had since the, you know, in over a half dozen years, since they actually raised the local option rooms tax. I mean, you know, so there's, and I think the states saw it as well, which is why they're running a hole. So, you know, I don't want, I think that it just, sound cautiousness, I think, is the path that we're taking right now. And, you know, I think, you know, I think we're, sort of, on that theme, I think we're solid, on solid footing going forward, but I think that there is a sense of being cautious and fiscally conservative as we move forward at this time. So that's what we're recommending.
One thing you did mention was that we didn't borrow the full amount for the schools.
That's right.
And I think I heard at one of the recent meetings that they might be under budget. Is there any chance that this million would be offered up to them and to cover unexpected costs on that project?
The answer is no. What had happened was, and what you heard about is accurate, that they hadn't facted into the IT costs, I think it was $100,000 in IT costs for the modular classrooms. But at this point, the message that's come out through me, and I've conveyed through Gary and so forth, because ultimately, I own this thing in terms of the, you know, sign-off on warrants and the expenditure and so forth, is that's going to have to be dealt with with the existing contingency. And then I don't think there's any intent, you know, to go back for more funds beyond what was left at the table at the tri-board meeting.
Yeah, I think there was some parking lot work that maybe they could scrap instead of the IT.
Right. Right. So there's no, no, it's not, this isn't a backdoor way of doing that. And clearly, that, you know, no, that's not in the cards. And remember, these meetings are audiotaped and videotaped, so they're, you know, it's very clear, you know, that's not in the cards, when, that's not going, that's not the plan of action.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about that?
I have a question that's sort of side-related, now that we're not going to be cleaning the storm drains as much. Recently, my street, they came through, I believe it was a third-party company that was hired by National Grid, and we had a gas line redone last year. So this year, they came first, and they sprayed everything, they put, they covered a lot of the cracks from a couple of years ago with this spray gel that I've seen you use, but it seemed like there was a new product that they used. Then later on, the other side of the street, they finished the patch that they did the other year. But I'm talking about this spray gel. Usually, you spray it on the street, it cleans, fixes the patches. They put this on so thick that, in the next rainstorm, it started to roll off the pavement on my street. And now that we had more rainstorms this week, I've noticed it's rolling off, and now chunks of it are sitting over our stormwater grates in front of my next-door neighbor's house. And there's a section, I can actually just pick it up and just peel it right off the street, and I'm concerned that is the, the street cleaners are coming through, that there you're going to start getting a lot more damage, because this stuff is just coming off in strips.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's, they come back to what we call tack and sand the edges of the patch.
Yes.
And the road was probably wet when they did it, so it didn't adhere right.
It didn't adhere, and it's a mess. And I just don't want you to come and clean my street without looking at that first, because it's really...
The catch basin cleaner's out. I don't know if he's made it up, he's been in the Westlands area, so I don't know if they've made it up there yet. But, no, we can get our road inspector to check it tomorrow. That's probably what it was. They come back to seal the seam between the old...
Yeah, exactly.
It was probably a little damp or whatever. When they put it down, it just doesn't adhere.
So if you look at the house just before mine, number five, there's a big patch that was done, that whole thing, you can just peel off, and just a big chunk. So as soon as I saw that, I went, oh, my gosh, the street cleaner's going to be coming through here in another couple of weeks, and then we're going to be coming to town meeting saying, well, we broke the street cleaner.
Simple enough.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep, no problem.
And then, before Steve leaves the podium, I just want to acknowledge, because Steve was the one put all the work into it, we did receive notice last week by phone call from the Lieutenant Governor in the office, that the town of Chelmsford was awarded a complete streets grant in the amount of $328,000.
Oh, wow. Congratulations, Steve.
Yeah, just want, you know, and so that's good news. Once we get the written notification, we'll send it out to you and publicize it, but that was good news that came in last week, and we shared that. So I just want to acknowledge Steve and his efforts there, because I know that was one of the board's goals from back then, was to get involved with the complete streets program.
What would be the goal of that grant money? What would you say? The best use would be?
It's three separate projects that I applied for. One is some crosswalk improvements at Parkhurst and North Road, because right now, it's only the, crosswalk's three legs, so if you come up, you gotta go all the way around, so it's adding that fourth leg. Remove and replace the sidewalk when we repaved Bill Ricka Road later in the summer, from the center up to the center school, so all this sidewalk will be wide and ADA compliant. And then I also did apply for the Richardson Road sidewalks, from Edgeland down to Princeton Street, past the dog park and all that, to make the connection.
Great. Thank you.
And then the last one, while Steve's there, related the sidewalks, since you brought it up, is we also received notice from the state last week. It was interesting, it was a busy week for the state during the holiday week, but they are, in the process of doing the land takings for the North Road on-ramp and off-ramp work, I don't know if that came up at NIMCOG recently, Pat, but they've sent out notices, including to our treasure collector, to see if there's any liens and so forth on the land that they're taking. It's minor strips, and we're talking like 60 square feet, little areas, but basically on both sides, one being the side closest to the center, you know, by, which would be your off-ramp, on the opposite side of the roadway, you know, where you see the houses in the wooded area, there's some takings there, one of which is an owner-unknown parcel, and then the two houses that are there, and then a slight part of the church property. And then, and then on the other side, you're heading towards Dalton Road, on the opposite side of the street, you know, on the, where the on-ramp goes on, they're taking a small area there as well. So it's just indication that that project is progressing.
It is, yeah.
Yep.
So, I want people to know.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And then the last thing I have on the agenda, and Pat sort of noted to me earlier, really is sort of a public service announcement, but it's here on the reports, is the deadline for the submission of citizen petition warrant articles.
Paul, you skipped over a couple of things.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm reading down a line, I'm sorry. The dog fence installation. Since our last meeting, we did send out the building commissioner, he went out and inspected the site with an officer present, filed his report. Basically, to give a status of where it is today, is the fencing has been installed, the outstanding issue at this point is the backside of the property that goes into a wooded area. The petitioner, in this case, Valerie Dunleavy, is proposing that they put up basically what she describes as a wiring fencing over there, as opposed to the six-foot stockade fencing that's taking place in the remainder of the property. The update that I had at 4:30 this afternoon was that her attorney was on vacation last week due to the holiday, that they're working on a draft that will be finalized and submitted by Wednesday morning to the court, but everything else has been completed. And again, they're looking to go with a welded wire fence on that wetlands back portion of the property, as opposed to installing a full stockade along that side of the property. So that's where things stand at this point.
Okay, and you're going to keep monitoring?
We'll keep monitoring that, keep it updated. Again, there have been no issues or concerns regarding that property, that dog, at this point in time. As you know, there are also others monitoring the situation, we occasionally get correspondence, I think, sometimes you see on that property. So that is, that's where things stand at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, on the reports, the modular classrooms, and again, Gary Persicetti, who's overseeing this project, is not here this evening, but I wanted to report, and this is really a good news report, the modular classrooms, final modular classrooms have been installed, meaning they've been brought to the site and placed by the modular company. Right now, they're doing all the ancillary work, you know, such as the, you know, related masonry work with those things, and some brick work, like at center school, if you go by there. And the big key aspect at this point is electrical service connection. We're providing temporary generators, small generators, to work on the installation, but our big concern right now is, is we're, you know, we're two months away from the start of school, and we're still working with National Grid to get permanent service in a couple key locations, despite the fact that those requests went back in last January. So I think we're confident that we've done everything we can do, we're just hopeful that National Grid will complete its required work to have that service operational for the start of school. So, but again, the, all the buildings themselves have been delivered, the contractors are working well, it's within budget. And again, I think the only uncertainty is the National Grid service connections. There's one issue at Harrington School with the transformer, which we don't think is a major one, but there's a couple others that we're hopeful will be resolved, and if need be, I said, we'll go up to David Gendel if we have to, to make sure. It's just, you're dealing with a large utility company, and engineering and so forth, so... But I do want you to know that Gary has been on top of that, and even, he was even at a meeting this morning, you know, to touch base on that, to make sure that things were still on schedule for their weekly construction meeting today, so things are going well. And then lastly, under the public service announcement, August 7th, or the first Monday in August, is the deadline for the submission of citizen petition warrant articles for the fall annual town meeting. So again, if people, as we've often in the past, if people need assistance in the compilation or drafting, you know, we will support that, even using the resource of town council. So if somebody does have a request with 10 signatures, and again, we remind them to get more than 10, so that they get the verified number. And again, that's just a matter of four weeks away at this point. And then the last thing I wanted to notify the board about, and again, under my report, is the RFP for Katrina Road has been sent to the central register for the disposition of that property. The, it'll appear this Wednesday on the 12th in the central register. Proposals are due on August 11th at noon, so we're hopeful that at your second meeting in August, that we'll come back with a solid proposal to move forward on for the disposition of that Brownfields property. So we're, you know, so we're moving that along, and as you may have seen in your email today, Linda Prescott submitted a draft preservation restriction for the 101 Mill Road site. So we'll have her come in, she asked to come before you to discuss that at a meeting this summer, so I think that's on for early fall as well. And then lastly, the Moreau's property auction. John Sousa is not able to be here this evening. That was unsuccessful, there were no bidders. So again, in speaking to John this afternoon on the phone, he's thinking, again, doing a reissuance after Labor Day, and then coming in and discussing with you what the terms of that would be in terms of minimum sale price prior to that time.
Does that still have to be an auction, Paul?
Yeah, it's under the same process, yeah. So, I mean, so the process worked, we had a couple bidders there, but there were no bidders for the minimum that was established. So that's where that stands at this point in time. So you can see, there's a number of items in progress, and at your next meeting, I'll actually have a list of draft warrant articles for fall town meeting, because I hate to start thinking of fall, but, you know, your next meeting will be the last day in July, then the 31st, and then we'll give you the first draft on the 31st, the second draft in your August meeting, and then your meeting right after Labor Day, the Monday after Labor Day, you'll be signing the warrant for the fall town meeting, which is actually early this year, because the way the calendar falls. It's the third Monday, but the third Monday is early this year. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the next item is annual appointments, so you've got...
Right. We don't have very many tonight.
Speaking of that, Paul, I was asked about the personnel board, and basically, what they've been doing lately, and a couple people asked me, and they said, I said, maybe you take a few...
We just had in the election for the employee rep, so that just took place at the end of June, and recognizing that the board is seeking to have the performance appraisal form reevaluated, so probably get them going. My guess would be August or early September, the personnel board would meet, and we do have a vacancy on the board, if, I think, in the, if anyone is interested in serving.
They were asking me basically what their responsibilities are, other than like the, you know, the salaries raises, the...
Yeah, rules and regulations for non-union employees, yeah. That's the key. The key there is, it's for the non-union employees of the community, which are basically the, you know, the administrative employees of the town, sewer and police lieutenants.
And right now, they haven't been meeting, is that what you're saying?
No, they haven't met in probably about six months or so.
Yeah, their last big, big thing was implementing the PTO, right? The paytime off.
Right.
That was several years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I'll make a motion to accept the town manager's committee reappointments as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have a bid award.
Yeah, a bid award for the center school flooring. You remember, maybe recall from town meeting, that's where we're replacing carpet and such with the tile, floor tile and so forth. Good news is, there were four bids received. We've done reference checks and so forth, and we're recommending the acceptance of the low bid from JC Flooring for a total cost of $119,400. And that includes the installing of the VCT tile and base, removing the carpet, installing the carpet tile in locations, as well as all the moving related to that in terms of shelving books and furniture in the library. So the good news is, this is well into budget for the project, so this would be one of those items where we have some money left over. those items where we, we have some money left over, you know, to use towards another project that next year's capital.
And when would they do this?
We're trying to get this done now, which is why we're here. I mean, again, normally I wouldn't bring this forward without Gary present, but we were looking to get the notice of award out tomorrow, to see if we can get this work done before school opens.
Okay, great.
And this isn't conflicting with adding the pods right next to it?
No, no, believe it or not, no, there, there is, there's a lot of moving going on in the schools, because as, as, as you're aware, they, you know, you, you've got the pods in there, and so usually they're putting like the fourth grade or whatever into the pods, and now you're moving multiple classrooms around, so this will just take place in the minutes of all those moves.
That's what I'm thinking.
Exactly.
And, and not stomping on all the, the new materials.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the bid from JC Flooring, the amount of $119,400 for the center school flooring replacement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have one set of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 22nd, 2017.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're all the way to referrals. Laura, how about if we start with you tonight? Do you have anything?
Uh, no, other than a wonderful 4th of July, I hope everyone was able to enjoy as many activities as they could get to, there was so much going on this year. I think the parade committee did a fabulous job, as usual, and already looking forward to next year.
All right, very good. Okay, Ken, what do you have?
I'll just second what Laura said, I received a lot of compliments about the parade, I didn't do anything, but I got a lot of phone calls and comments by people that I ran into, so, great job by the parade committee.
All right. George, how about you? Do you want to talk about the parade?
Oh, we're saying, yeah, I just, a little jizz. Couldn't make it, so, getting old.
That's allowed. Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
Non-parade, none?
I do.
Okay. All right, well, I will then also make unanimous the, the comments from Laura and Ken, it was a great parade, great weather, so we're looking for the same thing next, next year. And also wanted to mention, we have three new Eagle Scouts in town of Chelmsford, Jesse Walsh, Nick Anderson, and Ryan Willamy, who had a court of honor a couple of weeks ago, officially achieved their Eagle status, so congratulations to those young men. That's all I have for this evening. Apparently, we have no press questions, unless John has another new profession, in addition to commenting during public hearings.
Wasn't about her.
That's true. All right, so I'll accept the motion to adjourn then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next meeting will be July 31st. It won't be this quick.